If we need it to be wider, then this specification must be a porous material. So why are we an exception? Why is the park an exception?
I don't think you require homes to...
Well, are we talking about allowing homeowners to have no more hardscape in aid of the surface than what they started with? Isn't that the newest proposal that we've seen?
Well, the drainage requirements are to capture it on site.
Yes, but in regard to the hardscape...
We don't have new regulations.
I don't think you have any new regulations.
It's just the hardscape triggers maintaining the drainage on site.
So if you use a impervious material, like asphalt, you're probably going to have a greater capacity on the on-site system that you're trying to sign. But I don't think there's anything that would make a person use impervious... I mean pervy.
Well, yeah, the idea is it could.
It could.
I just think a bunch of asphalt running through the park is a good idea.
Well, is this our... so can I ask a question on that about staff there? Is this something that was recommended to the applicant by us as a town?
The widening path?
Yeah, the widening path.
This is a small segment of path. It's not throughout the town. It's connecting one path to...
The path is existing.
The path is existing.
It runs along the tennis courts.
In the asphalt.
All the way from the parking lot up to the parking lot.
Yes.
Well, actually, the whole walking path all the way around the park is asphalt.
Yeah, so it affects you all.
But that's not part of the... There's a... I believe the town got a grant to build a fitness path around the park, and that's one thing. But there is a... In addition, there are various asphalt paths that go through that area. And some of the other paths are made from gravel type of material. And if we need to widen the path, that's one thing. But perhaps we should require that it not be asphalt. We don't need... It's primarily for foot traffic.
So the one thing I would think about on that is who's using the foot... Who's using the foot traffic in that one area? So if somebody were to come over here and say, "I would like eight feet around me in the park," I'd say, "Well, then, let's just make it a parking lot. Forget about it." But in this case, because of the nature of the use... The user... What are they, nine years old? How old are they again?
Generally eight, nine, and 10.
Okay, so nine-year-old with little rock pathway is going to kick up a lot of rock. And it's going to be everywhere, and it's not going to be on the pathway. So in this one area, that combined with the things that are likely to happen in that area in terms of, you know, rolling in bags of... I was watching it. The first night we had this, I just happened to go over there and look. And I looked at the site. That's where I saw it. And everybody was coming in with these roller bags of bats and stuff. So for me, I would think this one section a little wider with a number of people that we're talking about going down that with the nature of those people and what they are going to be doing there would be better to be asphalt. But I agree with you everywhere else in the park. So it's the only thing I would say is that the use of this would drive me towards more asphalt.
Or more pervy.
Yeah, more of a pervy system.
There are impervious... I mean, pervious designs in hardscape that you can use. However, they're more expensive, or I'm not sure that I would require it in this particular case. Would somebody make a motion? I guess somebody will not. Well, I'll move with the path.
Hi, this is John from the shipping department of emergency medical alert. I was calling to schedule the delivery of your medical alert system. It's a fallen, I can't get up type of system you've seen on TV. Looks like the system's been recommended by thousands of hospitals and medical professionals. Let's see. Says here that the system's already been paid for. Looks like you're getting the system because either yourself, a friend, a family member, or maybe even someone you know has experienced a fall in the past. So again, it's already been paid for. It's not going to cost you whatsoever. Also says here that the shipment has already been paid for. Schedule the delivery of your emergency medical alert system. Press one. Again, you have your system shipped out to you. Press one now. Then press five to decline the shipment of your system. If you already have a medical alert system, please disregard this message. Again, if you already have a medical alert system, please disregard this message.
It's coming over the speakers. Disregard this one. Well, let me move that path from the parking lot to the field. Be eight feet, eight feet wide, and be of asphalt as shown on the proposal.
So on eight feet? Oh, limited. How about limited to eight feet? And whatever staff believes. I mean, if they were to say this section should be a little thinner because there's a tree around it or something like that?
Not greater than.
Yeah, yeah, not greater than.
Not greater. All right, I'll change my motion. Path not be greater than eight feet in width and be of asphalt. Do I hear a second? Thank you. We have a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Barely. And all those against?
What does limited section of path mean? From parking lot to the field.
Let's specify that.
The title at the top.
Yeah, but that's a good specification.
Well, it says on the outline I have is from parking to the field.
I think it does help having it in the morning.
Could we say as recommended by Public Works or something like that? I mean, if it's making our gardeners' job easier, I want to do it. If it doesn't, if it's something that they, you know, if it's a light... If they see it as, "We've got to do eight feet, and we really shouldn't around that tree, but they said eight feet. I'm worried about that. Send for it."
Okay, as recommended by Public Works. Okay.
Was it three to one?
Three to one.
I think he... I don't know if he got mine.
Or...
No, because I was getting clarification before I voted.
Okay, four.
Five.
Four to one. Okay, good.
What do you think?
All right, now we go into the fun part.
Now, we still have two easy ones.
Which ones do you agree?
Maxed out dugouts. We give it four to one, but...
Okay, let's try dugouts. Any feeling?
What was the issue here regarding what the issue was on this one?
I think it was the chairman's comments.
Yes, my comments were that they not be depressed, that shatter the plan to be out of the surface, and they not have a permanent roof on it.
Since we've taken the... Some of the permanent fencing off out of season, when the fence is down, it would be a hole if we considered what...
That's correct.
I want some clarification.
The dugouts were never designed to be sunk in.
They're not really...
They're at surface level, at grade.
They're like a swimming pool when they're ready.
Exactly.
At grade, all right. And fence... Fence is permanent? Part of it would be, I suppose, by what permanent fencing is allowed or has been approved by us.
Well, right now, the footprint of the fence includes an area that... That definitely has two-fold safety issue. And also, you know, it's wet. He's there now. So I don't have a problem with what's there.
You would say, I agree, that there'd be no additional fencing beyond the permanent fencing that we've already approved.
Yeah, I was going to separate the fencing that we did approve last time separately. And this is just about the dugout. And I said, so the question I have, and one, it's not going to be dug down. And two, do we want a roof or not? Do we allow a roof or not? Those are the two elements on the dugout area that I think of. Because the fencing is covered by what we did earlier.
Do you want to speak to us to the roof?
All this and others, I'm inclined to give the applicant, as long as it's green or brown and not chartreuse.
And I like the way you say you've got to have a roof. They paint out there. We actually bring tarps to put over the things. So of all the things here about making the park better, having a permanent roof, I think...
There's a safety element to that, too, so the kid doesn't get hit in the head by the baseball.
Commissioner Lang, to your point, absolutely. We want it to fit the park. We want good colors. We don't want anything crazy. And that's going to... Will definitely come out in the final design process. A lot of the design drawings that you have seen to this point have been conceptual because we can't spend money continually revising and based on this opinion that it changes to that opinion. We definitely want it to fit the look and the feel of the park.
Right.
The fencing will be see-through, so it's just covered only to Commissioner Quinlan's point. It's a safety issue, and it's also a baking issue. Those kids bake out there. And blue tarps and silver tarps strewn over the top look horrible.
All right, the dugout's done. Will they have a permanent roof over them?
We have...
I disagree. I think... I'm all for the safety of the dugouts. Do different kinds of things. But I think there can be a semi-permanent roof put on beginning of the season and rolled off and put away after the end of the season. A tarp or a soft cover of some kind and put away. Then the dugout will look much like it does today and not have a roof. I'm going to have similar comment on the seating area. And whatever we do there ought to be the same way in the dugouts. It shouldn't be different.
Okay, maybe we just break the dugouts into various parts. One is obviously spray level. I don't think there's any disagreement as to that. You have an issue between having a permanent roof or do you have a semi-permanent roof in which awns or other place can protect the players from the sun as well as any ball?
You brought lighting under the cover roof of the bleachers, but you hadn't brought it up against the dugout, which now has a cover roof. So I was just wondering if there were just some delay for safety.
Lighting for safety?
Semi-permanent roof.
Since the dugout's open, the dugout's open on four sides. I don't think that there'd be a need for a light there. There's no night gowns.
We're not playing tonight.
Okay, I would agree with Phil's comments.
I would agree with that.
Okay, Eric?
I'm more comfortable with permanent roof personally. But on this one, I'm more comfortable having the applicant do what they think is the best thing for the field. And I think it can be done in a way that doesn't disrupt the look as long as we concentrate on how the overall look... I'm more concerned about the overall look of this thing and whether it looks like a pavilion or a small little baseball field. So I agree with you on the standpoint of they ought to blend in. But I can't think of a semi-permanent roof that does what I think we want to do.
Well, you could do it in a number of ways. You could do it with an awny. You can do it with lube rations. You can do it with a whole bunch of different kinds of things. One of the things that wasn't mentioned, I think I had it while my comments, that these roofs are going to be open to all kinds of little critters. And pigeons are going to love to get in there. And they'll be in there before you know what happened.
Yeah, I agree with that. All right.
Okay, Phil, do you want to make a motion on this?
We already got...
Do you want to make a motion?
Well, I wouldn't want to make that. I would say the dugouts as portrayed in subsection A only.
At grade, semi-permanent roof removed at the end of the season. Correct. Okay, any further discussion on that?
The roof would be removed, but there's going to be a framed structure that would support it, and that could remain.
Screen. Sure, that'd be permanent.
Okay. Just one.
Yeah, support screen.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye. All those against?
Aye, no. And all difference to the motioners?
Sure. Three to two. Semi-permanent as described in A above.
Good thing we moved the last 17 items on the agenda to next time.
Backstop.
Backstop. Thank you, Erin.
Backstop.
What do you feel about backstop?
I think that's your comment as well.
Which one?
Move it at the end of the season. I guess I didn't see any other comments on backstop.
Backstop's permanent down, right?
Except it doesn't have a hood on it.
Yeah, but it's a... It'd be a fence, but right? It wouldn't be a solid, but it'd be a fence that type of...
Well, that wasn't quite clear what it was going to be. It should be the same configuration of color as in... Now, black, so you don't see it all the time. But maybe the hood can come down. On that?
It's a very standard baseball overhang, and it is made of the black vinyl coated chain link. It's see-through. It's fairly transparent. There's no permanent structure enclosed over that.
It's like a vacay cage.
Just clarify with the lower... Yeah, the overhang. And the lower part got the solid.
The lower part does have a solid for balls that bounce. Yeah. The actual overhang itself to prevent foul balls from going over into spectators and to people walking along the path or the tennis courts, which happens regularly, is standard fencing. It is shown in the design drawings from day one.
Is it arch type or is it flat type?
We've proposed flat type.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay. I need a motion on this one.
Do you... You were the only one that has, I think, any comments that were other than those from Phil's additional comments.
Well, I would like to see the backstop taken away and the area restored to a non-baseball look. If it's impossible to create a backstop that can be done, then I'd go for the minimum amount of walls, roofs, and so forth, some of which may be able to be taken down if you have a season to minimize the effect of... But that's my...
When you say roof, it's not really a roof. It's...
It's the wire that's coming over the top. It's fencing coming over the top so when the ball is fouled...
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, so it's open.
Yeah, it's a mesh.
Mesh. It's a mesh.
Or maybe that could be on a hinge that folds down, you know?
My thing on that is that this is a dangerous structure. It's not really secured. I mean, this is a heavy, heavy thing. And it's high enough to catch foul balls. So it's... I've got a picture of the field now. And we can pass it down for the public record. If you want me to forge this picture, I can do that. But what it is, it's a high structure. And the addition to the structure is either a diagonal or a hoop over the top that catches the ball when they go up and back.
Right.
And it's... I don't... There is some visual change to the structure that we would have now. But it's for the volume of baseball that we're proposing on this field and the sort of uptick in terms of usage, the safety factor on that would be worth the trade-off in my mind. And it has minimal... Yeah. That's what I put in front of you. It has... It would have minimal impact on the metal effect. And that's so you know where I am on the metal effect. And this element doesn't look like a metal effect impacting anything to me.
All right, maybe we have a motion on this one.
I've got a question, though. The so-called seating area pavilion, or whatever you want to call it, has a roof height of 15 feet plus the cupola. How much higher than that is the proposed backstop?
I don't recall the specific height. I would say probably five feet roughly. Four, five feet maybe at its crest. I don't know the specifics on that. And that will all be a picture there of the final plan.
Here's the picture if you want to see. There's a couple... I don't know. It doesn't give exact heights, but it does show that it looks like the top of the completely horizontal part is not quite up to the top of the cupola. And then it rises in an angle. I mean, these are conceptual, so it's not like...
It's roughly the same height, but a little higher at its crest because it has to slant back, and then it has openings. So when balls do go up and over and land on top, instead of them staying there, they roll and come down through it. It's very standard baseball fields all over.
And all I'd say is that the current structure has a peak in the middle of it that is of the height I would expect the tip of this extension to be. So it's going to... In the structure in the picture, there's a bar where the next extension starts. And if you want me to pass it back down, we can do that. And at that point, that is the point at which this extension comes out, to be at about the same height as the current height, but farther forward. So it's over about... It's more over batter. And so all that does is put them in a situation where they end up not... You know, not... The ball doesn't go out, so it keeps the ball in the field. It doesn't create a safety... Minimizes safety issues. And its impact, I believe, is no more than we have today, but more functional.
Do you want to make a motion on that or do you want to comment? Do you want to make a motion regarding the backstop?
I would move that we recommend a backstop with a... Whatever we call it. Safety hood or a...
A foul ball screen.
Foul ball screen on the top to be done in a see-through manner consistent with the rest of the backstop. And that'd be a permanent structure.
Why don't we just not include it in the recommendations? Because that's what they've proposed.
That's fine with me, too, as I'm just putting on the list. So that's fine.
I think we should include it one way or the other. I think we're trying to make an all-encompassing analysis of it. So Eric has made a motion.
I'll second.
We have a second? Need to further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against?
Against.
No.
No.
Three to two.
So are you against?
No.
So just for clarification, Phil, was it the... You want it removed if possible? I just want to make sure it's not as high as the goals of the drawing.
Structure. I think we can go up to the structure as obviously the first. You're going home? Oh, come on. Point, stuck it out. Let's talk about size. And the size is basically seating capacity.
I'd like to maybe ask a question. At one point, staff report says 100. The drawing says 200. There was some explanation given a month ago of what the difference was. It had to do with something that Public Works had.
Oh, my God. The building code for occupancy standards sets a size that's a seat. And I believe it's 18 inches.
How much?
18 inches. We should pull out a...
Yeah, I did that.
Okay. So that's what the building code for occupancy standards is a seat. Menlo Atherton Little League feels that that standard's too tight for a seat. So they're indicating that occupancy would be more like 100 based on actual usage.
My question, my comment is this. I did a little measurement on drawings. And I get something in the neighborhood school. I could, because it says, "Don't steal drawings." But it says there's roughly 320 feet of seating in the proposal. And 200 seats gives you 1.6 feet per seat. So there it is, roughly 18 inches. A little bit better. So I think they're thinking 200 seats.
Wow, I think with the... What I... 200 seats if you look at 18 inches a seat. What they're saying is that people take up more than that. So with that distance, it's really...
I'm just going by the proposal once on the drawings. And it looks to me like they're talking 200 people. And I think that frankly is about three times too much.
So you're saying 200 people if they were 18 inches apart?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I think they are saying that. They're saying that there's not going to be 200 people.
Yeah, so that's going to be like this.
Maximum 100 people.
Even closer, closer. Even closer. It's cozy.
Would we like comments?
Yes.
Okay, so we've gone over this a couple of times. We don't anticipate 200. 200, and that would be awful. And the fact of the matter is the code, as Ms. Costa-Sanders mentioned, is 18 inches per seat. We've even put together a board with red electrical tape on it and measured it. And you get three people sitting on it, and you're just cranked. Especially when we have grandparents and aunts and uncles and people coming in from out of town, people in wheelchairs that need to come in, which we will have ADA access as well. It is simply incredibly tight. We wanted to make sure that it was bigger so it was more comfortable. And when you have the same board that's 18 inches per and that middle person sits up, the first thing people do is scoot towards the middle a little bit just to kind of get a little more room. We're not planning on 200 people being in there.
But how do we limit the size we wish?
Excuse me?
How do we limit the size? By saying 24 inch, I mean 24 inch?
I guess we could put something on the bleachers that...
Maybe measure it down, I suppose.
But ultimately, it's not intended to have 200 people crammed in there. It's intended to have a nice, comfortable sitting. And that was the number that we selected, working through various design proposals, et cetera. And looking at the people and the elderly that come to the games, it's people that carry in large bags. It just... It allows them a little more freedom of space.
I'm going by what's on the draw, 200 seats.
And keep in mind that it was in the arguments, rebuttals, for and against. The same design drawings you're looking at now were presented. We've discussed this issue at length since last July, I believe it was, when we had our public information day on the field. We had it out there, and we were talking to people about it, explaining the process. Our tone on that hasn't changed. We don't expect it to be 200 people. And we don't want it, quite frankly, to be 200 people. That would not be fun. And it simply won't happen unless there's some kid that comes through that's a nine-year-old phenom, and people come in from out of town to watch him, which has never happened. I really don't foresee that happening. So it's designed for comfortable seating and fewer spectators.
On top of that, I've been watching the games periodically. And I haven't seen more than about 30 people. Most of them congregated on the knoll on the right-hand side, sitting out there with their launchers and their launches and so forth. You sit along the left field line. They all sit along the right field line on that knoll.
For the shade.
And most of them, if there's 30 out there, I'm surprised.
Yeah, we'll get games where there are 75 to 80. We've talked about this before. General games, if it's windy or colder, you're going to see less people there. Grandparents don't come out as much. As you go later in the season, you see a lot more people attend games. The people who do sit over there, did you see anybody get hit by a ball by chance or get close to it? I hate to say this, Paul, but in our last game, our playoff game, your son hit one over the backstop and almost hit someone. There was somebody else on the team that almost hit somebody sitting in that area. We want to get everybody in one safe zone for safe, comfortable spectator. That is our intent. That's it.
Well, thank you. I, for one, would like to see the stadium reduced in size.
I for two.
So I think we could allow 24 inches per seat and set at, say, 60 people at 24 inches on set. I mean, on per seat.
What's the... What's the... What's the... What's the...
Well, yeah, I don't know if you want to talk about size of structure or number of seats. Is the intent to reduce the size?
My intent is to reduce the size. And if they can...
So the impact to me... I'll let anything else go. The impact of the seats is not as much of a structural impact to me to the visual and the change in the atmosphere as the... and the change in the, in the atmosphere as the building around it. So I'm less, and I, I appreciate the, the measurement thing and the code thing and all that conflict and all that. So for me, I, we, we can recommend a slightly less, just to make sure we're trying to trim it, and I recommend it based on your comment there, it'd be somewhere in the ninety range, so we'd accommodate, you know, at least, you know, at least what Duke says, is a normal high end, and a hundred sounds okay with me. But I, it's the, it's all the stuff around it when you look from afar. Right now, you see bleachers, and it's just like bleachers, and they're kind of behind the backstop, and they, you know, or, or they, they don't feel, I mean, they, it doesn't feel like it would have an impact if I see bleachers down there, kind of, with the idea that the bleachers would be kind of behind the backstop. What changes the nature of that is the size of the structure around it. So for me, it's almost like I want to talk about the structure, and then given that structure, what does the seating arrangement look like? That's my comment.
Well, then, you, to give guidance, I'm assuming that the structure is determined by the seating capacity. Perhaps not, but it does, it does look that way to me, and I'm happy to, if the size of the structure is reduced by forty percent, that's fine. Or we could put it another way, that we have seating capacity at sixty on, at twenty-four inches on center. But I, it's the structure that I'm concerned about, just as you are. And somehow we have to either determine that, I suppose we could say that the structure reduced by forty percent. What does that mean, that it means the length?
Height?
Or what?
For me, it's the visual impact.
Yes, I agree.
So it's the vertical visual, so for example, a design that had louvers in the back that is, it's see-through, so there was a peekaboo effect, to me, gives us another kind of way to have a structure that covers the, that covers the, the seats, which I think is a valid thing, and, and then the question would be, does every seat have to be covered? Because the shadows would, would protect some people from, from the overage. So each one of those, that's our, that's our, is our sales guy again?
Apologies.
But the, the, the idea would be, this impact of this vertical thing is different than the seating for me. So if we see that the shadows go across this way, and we can come back, come back off the edges and there's still seats there, I'm okay with seats, it's, it's this vertical.
Because, I, I mean, I, one of the things that I think is, is that the, the dominant thing in this, in this whole proposal is the structure. And when the voters voted on it, this was the structure that was proposed. And so to me, I actually don't want a structure there at all. I would rather have no structure there and just have open bleachers. But I actually think that this is, this was the, to me, was the dominant issue. Do you want this or do you not?
I don't know if it's on the ballot, is it on the ballot?
Covered, covered seating.
Yeah, I know that, I, that I get.
And, and so, so at, at least in, in, from, from my point of view, covered seating, this is, this is what they were talking about. It wasn't like, do you want covered bleachers? And so from my point of view, I agree that there are some design things that you can, you can put in, but I would be uncomfortable, given that this did go to a vote, to talk about we're dropping forty percent of the size or something like that, because I, I do think that this was the issue, when I was surprised that seventy-five percent of the people voted in favor of it, but they didn't.
If I can point you to it, just because you asked, it's in, the two hundred actually is the number that was given in the materials around the election, there was the impartial analysis, and then there was the argument in favor and against. So if you're looking to voter intent, you can make an argument that you would look at what they had read at the time, and that sort of frames the discussion.
Right, so that's, that goes back to the issue of, from my, from my standpoint, again, it's, it's the design of the, of the visual on that. So it's how much of the roof shows, how much of the, how much of the back, how the back is solid, what, what see-through aspect to you, that, that design element was not on the ballot. The design, the, the seats are, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with the two hundred and the eighteen, and how you talked about it. And I, and I fully, and I read that when I voted for it. So the, the thing about all, our flexibility on a planning commission is always about affecting the design and how the design actually helps the thing do what it's supposed to do and fit. And so to the degree that we could recommend something, and I, and I agree with you on the forty percent, I think the percentage thing doesn't work, I think that the idea of the, somehow conveying to the, to the, to the council the idea of really considering what kind of minimizing visual impacts of still look like a park, even though the structures there isn't working.
Well, the only, I know architects are sometimes geniuses, but the only way I know to minimize the effect of the structure is by reducing it in size. And we can reduce it by saying, instead of whatever the plan shows, we will accept sixty percent, seventy-five percent of the length of the roof, you know, so forth. That's all I've got, and I'm, I'm simple enough to say that's all I know about it at this point. I suppose you could say that other designs should be considered, but definitely, I think, all of us feel it should be a reduction in size. I suppose how that is accomplished, can be accomplished by reduction in seating capacity, it can be reduction in size or length of the structure, the depth of the structure and so forth.
Well, we haven't even talked about the roof yet, so that's part of the structure.
Yeah.
Well, let's just deal with, I mean, you want, let's try to talk about the size of what we feel comfortable with. Eric, I think you.